Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call the October Munson Planning Board meeting to order and we'll open a meeting for business. Has anybody, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of September 15? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I move with acceptance of September 15.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm aye. Okay, the motion carried. The second order of business. Tonight, we had another public hearing on the schedule for Vertex Tower assets for a cell site on Cody Road. We have, we've received a letter from the attorney from the developer requesting a continuation. I'll read the letter from Francis Parisi, attorney representing Vertex Tower Assets. As you are aware, Vertex Tower Assets LLC, the applicant in the above referenced matter, has applied to the Munson Planning Board for a special permit in site plan approval for the above referenced project, which is of course a cell site on Cody Road. The applicant respectfully requests that the planning board public hearing on the above referenced project scheduled for October 20th be continued without discussion until the regularly scheduled December 2020 meeting of the planning board currently scheduled for December 15. So the attorney requested that we continue the public hearing without discussion. Is there a motion to grant this request?
I move with grant the request.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor for granting the continuation?
Aye.
Aye. Craig is aye.
Paul is aye.
Tara is aye.
Evan is aye.
Marilyn's aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion is granted to continue the public hearing. We also have a bill to pay for US Postal Service, US postage, US Postal Service for postage in the amount of $14.95. I make a motion, we approve payment of this amount.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Craig is aye.
Tara is aye.
Paul is aye.
Evan is aye.
Marilyn's aye.
Okay, the motion has carried. Okay, and next up is a continuation of the public hearings for special permits for 96 Main Street. So I will reconvene the public hearings for a special permit. There's actually a couple of special permits and one for site plan approval. At this point, and again, we're going to break this planning board meeting into a couple, this hearing into two separate hearings. The first one will be to reconvene the special permit for the development of 96 Main Street. One of these special permits is for storm water management permit under bylaw section 6.19. And the second special permit is for activity in a water supply protection district as per section 4.2 of the Munson zoning bylaws. Again, let me give a little background on this stuff for people who may have not been through every one of these hearings. The petitioner requested the required approvals necessary to create a 9100 square foot retail building on land at 96 Main Street. I requested all plans and documents to be available online before tonight's hearings. I also made sure our town of Munson bylaws were available online. This would give all interested people the complete body of knowledge necessary to see what is required by the town, excuse me, and what is supplied by the proponent. I realize this proposal might be controversial and hoped complete knowledge would enable all people participating tonight to know the facts and not rely on social media, which sometimes is tainted by misinformation. This electronic format may only make the process harder to ingest and comprehend, but hopefully you took the time to review these documents before the hearings. Now, the bylaw, which, the bylaws which the planning board must follow are a compilation of laws, all of which were approved by a town meeting vote after various public hearings. These bylaws weren't created by some oblique town boards. Opinion has no bearing on approval or disapproval of any zoning permits. If the submission meets the bylaws, it gets approved. If it doesn't meet the bylaws, it gets rejected. There will be two special permit hearings related to the proposal and one site plan approval. I'll break the hearings into two separate segments. The first will deal with the two special permit requests. These are two closely related matters. The first special permit will be for storm water management permit. And the second will be for permit for activity within the water supply protection district. This district is an overlay zone and approval is required because Munson bylaws 4.2.6C.3 says any use which will render impervious more than 15% or 2,500 square feet requires this permit. So that's what kicked this off in this particular proposal. These two water quality related special permits are very technical. So the town hired Ty and Bond, an independent engineer, to review the proponent's engineering to be sure it's correct and meets the bylaw. The proponent was charged for this review. We will refer to their report for input. June 11th, Ty and Bond sent a response to some of the issues with the petitioner BL Company's original submission. BL made some modifications and Ty and Bond responded to these revised plans on June 25th with some other concerns. Most of these concerns were regarding reusing an existing 12-inch pipe for outflow onto land of an abutment. No previous easements for this use could be found. On August 18th, Ty and Bond responded to the revised plan of BNL and so all their concerns were addressed. Is the representative of the proponent here tonight, is Matt here and available?
Yep, I will get to Matt here as quickly as possible.
All right.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. How are you?
Good, Matt. Hey, I'm wondering if you could bring us up to speed on that 12-inch pipe. That seemed to be one of the big sticklers that Ty and Bond had regarding your proposal.
Absolutely. Do you mind if I share my screen? I think it'll help aid conversation.
Anything that'll aid conversation.
Okay. Evan, am I okay to share permission wise?
I'm working on it. I think, I think you should be now.
For the record, again, my name is Matthew Bruton. I'm an engineer with BL Companies here on behalf of the applicant Homes LLC. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to discuss that. Let me just get to the right plan here. All right, so in regards to the 12-inch pipe that Ty and Bond was referring to, just to get, give you guys some orientation, Main Street Route 32 is across the bottom of the page. This is the proposed site and this is the old foundation, the previous development. By zooming to the left side here, adjacent to the railroad, there is an existing 12-inch pipe that outlitted in this direction, storm water from this site to the abutting neighbor and also railroad. Our original proposal called for to maintain this connection, even though, I'll highlight here roughly in yellow, which I'm going to change to red. This was our boundary. This is our property line. So the pipe left our property and went on to the abutting parcel. So that was the original concern, that there's no easement, no one could find a record of an easement existing on that abutting parcel. So we went over to our grading and drainage plan. So you guys remember, and as part of the special permit for storm water management, we do have to provide a storm water management system because we are increasing impervious area on the property. With that, the two goals are to mitigate peak flows, to make sure that storm water rushing off of this site isn't actually exceeding what is happening there today. So we analyze storm water for a series of events, the two-year, the 10-year, the 25-year and 100-year, to make sure the water and all those events continues to not exceed what already happens today in real life. And additionally, as part of that, we want to make sure the water that does leave the property is cleaned. When we do that, we are following the 2008 Mass Storm Water Handbook. And the goal of that, the clean storm water is 80% TSS removal, which stands for total suspended solids. So this is removing the grit and sand and things that are usually accumulate on a parking lot. So I'll just zoom in here, right? So we have a series of catch basins around the parking lot and driveway that will be collecting storm water that falls directly onto the pavement. We also have a connection to the roof leaders that follow the piping system as well. This is all directed to a underground tension system. This detention system is volume that holds water back and then allows it to leak off at a rate that does not exceed what currently happens today. Previously, I'll just change colors. We had this outletting on this pipe here in red. Now that we are, you know, confident that there is no easements available to secure that, that pipe to keep it in existence, we have changed our tactic to not require an easement, but to still provide the peak flow mitigation and the water quality. So water from this system, when it leaves, is now going to run in this direction. This is a level spreader. So it's a, it's a pipe that is just about the, about the surface of the ground and water will pour into this during a storm event and bubble up and it'll, and it'll sheet flow slowly off-site, no hard connection that goes over the property line. So this is matching drainage, drainage conditions. If you remember, I'll circle back to the, this. Sorry, a little laggy. A little slow on my side today. See my mouse moving? As you remember, we have about 410 contour, which is basically area here, which highlight the top of, top of the hill and water flows off in all directions from this point. So water was going in each direction. So the discharge of our underground system in this direction maintains the drainage patterns that were previously and currently on this site right now. So long story short, we do not require an easement to discharge the storm water from this property. And Ty and Bond's review of our storm water management, as you can see from that last peer review letter, has been addressed. I'm happy to go through the other comments, Mr. Chairman, if you would like, but I know that was once, what you specifically asked for.
Actually, Matt, I think what I was going to do is just read Ty and Bond's recommendations in their reply to their review of this latest plan.
Perfect. I mean, I can bring that up and follow along for people that are watching if that would help.
Sure, if you'd like to. And this is revised August 25th and this is the review of the final submission. And they went item by item and what they, what they did is they, they reviewed all of the submittals and also assuming that that 12-inch pipe wasn't going to be used. And they recommended that the board approve the project. And this is again, just the storm water. This is not the whole project. This is just the first part of our public hearing tonight, which is storm water and water supply protection district. So Ty and Bond made recommendations that the planning board approve the project with conditions. Their item number three, they recommended the board consider a condition of approval requiring that test pits be excavated prior to construction and results of those test pits be provided to the town for review. And number four, item number four, they also recommended conditional approval requiring the owner's signature on the maintenance agreements prior to construction. On item seven, they recommended approval conditional that test pits be excavated prior to construction and results of those test pits be provided to the town for review. In addition, they recommend the board consider a condition of approval requiring revised hydrologic calculations should the test pits result in substantially different subsurface conditions. And number 13, again, they recommended conditional approval requiring groundwater mounding analysis following subsurface investigations should the subsurface conditions warrant this analysis. And number 18, they recommended conditional approval requiring a storm water pollution prevention plan prior to construction. And number 19, they recommended approval conditional operation and maintenance budget being submitted prior to construction. And finally, on number 20, they recommended conditional approval requiring a signed illicit discharge compliance statement prior to construction. So Ty and Bond was satisfied with the final iteration, but again, they recommended approval with the conditions as noted.
Mr. Chairman, just to add to that, BL has seen that and the applicant has seen that list, that letter and list of the conditions and we have no issues with complying with all those conditions as stated by Ty and Bond.
Okay, very good. Thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to ask if any of the public has any comments to make on the proposal. And again, this is strictly for the special permit for the water, the storm water management permit and also the water supply protection district. Again, these are comments related strictly to how the storm water is going to be dealt with, not on the bigger issue of the building and the construction of the building. So at this point in time, Mr. Bressard, if we could throw it open to the public, I'd ask everybody to please keep their comments to one minute.
Right, so we, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll remind folks that if they would like to speak, and again, this is related only to storm water, you can raise your hand by either going through the participants tab on your computer and pressing the button that says raise hand, or you can press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. So the first person is Stephen O'Neil.
Hey there.
There you are, Stephen. Go ahead.
Yep, I would like to preface this with kind of a clarifying question. These, these conditions of approval that Ty and Bond was asking for, are those just things that the BNL construction would need to start rolling after they get approval from this board? Or are they things like test pits and the SWPPP that need to be shown before approval is secured? Verbage is kind of strange.
It seemed to be that there was a mix of both. Some would have to be done before construction occurs and then the others would have to be done once a, an excavator shows up with the ability to dig these test pits. Does that answer your question, Steve?
I think it does because he remuted himself.
Okay.
So let's, we're going to move on to, I don't have a name here. This is phone number ending in 4213. Okay, 4213 is not unmuted, so I'm going to lower that hand.
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead.
Yes, this is Valerie Bogaz from Two Country Club Heights. I have a concern and this meets at the very end of their storm water review, which is regarding the trash. They talked about the property owner saying that they will sweep the parking lots at least once per year to clean sediment, trash and other debris and that they will use an air vacuum sweeper to remove winter accumulations of road sand, potentially in April, June, September and December. My concern is whether or not this is going to be enough. If you take a look at the other businesses in Munson, everybody takes pride in keeping their properties clean and I'm looking to make sure that any trash that accumulates in this parking lot does not affect the neighbors. And furthermore, Matt, in a previous meeting said that there would be no outdoor storage, but yet in their storm water management report, it states that there will be no outdoor storage of hazardous chemicals, deicing agents, fertilizers, pesticides or herbicides anywhere around the building, but nothing is mentioned if you take a look at the Dollar General stores where they have cardboard bins that are left outside waiting to be picked up and be recycled, as well as their distribution bins, which are usually left outside. And again, would this cause additional trash to the residential neighbors in the area? And what could the planning board do to put in a condition to make sure trash gets picked up and not blown around the neighbor's property or other parts of our town?
Can you address that, Matt?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Okay, yeah, sorry, I muted myself. Valerie, great, great question. So in regards to the sweeping of the parking lot, that is a measure that helps, as everyone is aware, in New England, we use sand and potentially salt as a deicing agent during the winter months. And, you know, depending on the severity of the winter, those things can build up, not only on the surface of the parking lot, but also would be captured in the sumps of the catch basin. And so as part of our storm water management maintenance plan, we do recommend that, that sweeping be done periodically after the change of each season to make sure that it's removed and clean from the system so the system operates as designed. So that would need to be adhered to, and I believe one of the conditions from Ty and Bond is that operation and maintenance plan be signed by the landlord. So in regards to sweeping, yes, that, that is a standard that we're proposing to maintain the system. In terms with trash, obviously, you know, anything that would blow on a normal parking lot, a newspaper or, you know, a used coffee cup, things of that nature, we wouldn't want that to wait till the change of the season. That should be picked up, you know, periodically, daily as things fall. The reason that's not specifically listed, and this is, this is specifically talking about storm water. So the storm water is really concerned about the smaller particles that get pecked up by rainwater and swept into the system. So trash would obviously.
Well, it's, it's under your site maintenance plan. The parking lots and sidewalks shall be swept as necessary by the property owner at least once per year, is how you have it listed in your narrative.
Correct. And that is referring to the total suspended solids, the 80% TSF, which is the storm water standard for water quality. In terms of trash removal, that would happen on a daily basis as needed, as things are, you know, seen or blown onto the property. I can, if the commission finds it appropriate, I can surely add that to the storm water management maintenance plan if you want me to clarify that. In terms of outdoor storage, again, this is the storm water management report, so it's specifically referring to chemicals, fertilizers, herbicides, things that are detrimental to storm water and groundwater. As you know, this is in your water supply overlay protection district, so that is specifically listed out to give you the sense of calm that we are not going to be using those types of chemicals or storing mass amounts of these quantities on the property. Obviously, if those were to leak and spill and be captured in rainwater, that would be detrimental to your water supply overlay district. Now, in terms of outdoor storage, as Valerie mentioned, to the trash, obviously, as part of a commercial business, there are boxes, there are trash, there are, there is waste that is generated from a commercial facility, like any business, that would need to be stored outside to be picked up on a, you know, regular basis from a contractor. We do show, I'm going to just circle it here, I've zoomed in at the back of the building, but we do have dumpsters and dumpsters enclosures. So this is dumpsters and an area that's actually fully enclosed with gates to store that rubbish outside in the protected area, so it's not blowing around the property. And it's also not visibly seen because it's behind the building, behind the fence, actually behind two fences. So there's a fence here and here and around here. So storage of trash would need to occur because that's where it's picked up outside the building.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, Steve and O'Neil is back. He was having problems with his unmute when he was talking previously.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You back? Okay.
Yeah, I'm back. This is a simple one, though I think that the whole project as a whole hopefully will, you know, be denied on other grounds. I think that, I would like to say that with the proposed project disturbing more than one acre of land, BNL Construction needs to secure a National Pollutant Discharge Illumination System, NPDES, general permit, which requires that SWPPP we were talking about. As a community member, I'm concerned that the town wouldn't have recourse after the storm water plan was approved. So I recommend requiring SWPPP before approval.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Ty and Bond recommended conditional approval requiring the storm water pollution prevention plan prior to construction. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that if you'd like.
Please.
So obviously, Ty and Bond's recommendation is we need provide that before construction happens. If we don't do that, then the, then the, you know, approval is not validated and the town has recourse to not issue us a building permit. So I believe, you know, Dan LaRoche and his planning department would need to sign off to make sure everything is kosher with our zoning approvals prior to any other permits being issued by the town. So there is recourse to make sure we are following the commissions of approval that were set out by Ty and Bond and anything else the commission may feel they want to add.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like you have one final, final question, Mr. Chairman. So this is phone number ended in 756. I am asking you to unmute. You can do that by pressing. I am asking you to unmute. You can do that by pressing star six, I believe. Doesn't appear to be um unmuting themselves, uh Mr. Chairman, so.
Okay. Is that it for uh public comment?
That's it for that section, yes.
Okay, I'd like to throw it open to the planning board members for any comments they have regarding stormwater management or water supply protection. Yes, sir, Paul.
I had some comments regarding the the that issue of stormwater management. I'm concerned about we're we're waiting to a later date to get information about the suitability of the design systems for stormwater management. Well, I've never seen us do this in the past. We've always required all the information before we pass judgment on a plan. It seems that this should be no different. In those cases where Ty and Bond has suggested making a condition of approval, I suggest that those items should be taken care of beforehand, before we approve or disapprove. Those specific items would be numbers, items three, four, five, six, seven, thirteen, and nineteen of the Ty and Bond letter. Uh I I just don't think it's appropriate to to wait till the those of those investigations be conducted after we've closed the hearing on the site plan approval process. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any other board members care to weigh in on that?
I'd like to speak. This is Tara. Paul, I think you have a good point. I think we have the only time that we really have any clout is prior to approval. And if we're doing it as a condition, that is going to be hard to keep on top of. So I would agree with you, Paul, that it should be done, that the suitability of the plan, suitability of the system should be part of the plan, not conditioned.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to need to respond to Paul and Tara's?
Yes, yes, please, Matthew.
Absolutely. So uh Paul, Tara, a good question. So the the conditions that um Ty and Bond is laying out in regards to test pits specifically is 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 in general what they're all referring to. So to provide test pits, we really uh do get a geotechnical engineer on involved and on site to do borings. While they're there, they do several borings, permeability testing, and test pits. That uh always happens later um in a project's process because that is used for foundation design, a structural design of the building, the design of uh the pavement section, and it also verifies stormwater management design. So the uh the system that is designed now is conservative in taking historical and known groundwater elevations and soil types. You guys are relying on your peer review engineer to say this is all good. They said it's all good, but they want to double check these things when we actually get onto the property. So uh you're not losing power by approving this with conditions because as as with mentioned with the NIPDs and stormwater um approval, if um we do not provide these documents and Ty and Bond does not sign off on it, this approval is invalid. Um I know that you guys are relying heavily on Ty and Bond as your technical expert to to do this, and that is, uh it's very common that test pits invasive earthwork don't happen, and so they're further along in the local process. If you guys deny this application, obviously, this testing will not be disturbance on this property, and there won't be any earthwork. If you approve it, then we will move forward to the next process, and you guys have recourse to double check to make sure this is done with your uh your consultants. And again, Dan La Roche will never sign off on a building permit application with the other town departments until all the conditions of approval would be satisfied.
So the question before us is whether we grant conditional approval or withhold any approval until all of these items are completed. Is that your intent, Paul?
That is correct. They, these items are uh important because the site is so tight and there's no space left to alter the design. And so if the the uh tests that are conducted don't confirm the ability to the system to perform as designed, then we have a major issue. How are they gonna, how are they gonna redesign the system without major altering the site? So I think these conditions are very important to to be resolved before site approval. And further, again, I remind you that we don't, have not in my memory ever had conditions of this nature approved as a condition of the conditional approval. We've had things where where the legal issues had to be resolved with the town council, that sort of thing. Engineering kinds of information, kinds of work, I don't ever recall us granting a conditional approval on those.
So some of these things are just a signature or some pretty minor plans to be generated, and some of them will actually involve test borings or excavation. Is that, is my understanding correct?
That would be my understanding, yes.
Okay. Any other members of the board care to weigh in on this? On whether to grant approval uh conditional on this being done or require these items be done before approval is granted?
Kevin here. I think I would personally would require the, rather the do the testing prior to approval.
Okay. Uh Dan, do you have any input on this?
No, I think you could go either way. Um obviously, like I just worked on a design for a project for the town, and we did the the borings as part of the the actual engineering for the project. So we did it ahead of any construction. So you know, I I guess, you know, to be safe to to actually do the borings ahead of approval, then you know what kind of soils you're you're dealing with. Uh and then for the for the issue here is the, you know, to what level is groundwater to allow the uh the stormwater system to work?
Gotcha. So so it seems as though, just so this process doesn't drag on forever, that the only items that would stop approval would be those seven or eight items uh that we just discussed. Is that correct? Uh Paul, do you, would you concur? That based on Ty and Bond's response, these are the only outstanding items?
The the items I see that need to be resolved are items three, four, five, six, seven, thirteen, and nineteen. When we respect to the swap plan, uh we're not an enforcement officer for that. And that's, that is required uh documentation that has to be submitted, prepared rather, uh but does not have to be submitted. So I'm not sure why we'd be concerning ourselves with the swap. I mean, again, it, we have no enforcement authority. It's not a local issue.
Okay, so which items again? Did you say six? I didn't see that.
Three, items three, four, five, six, seven, thirteen, and sixteen, and nineteen.
Three, four, five, three, four, uh five, five is was addressed.
I'm sorry. Yes, you are correct. I'm looking at mine. Don't you? I didn't change them. Three, four,
Seven?
Thirteen, and nineteen.
Seven is also on. Three, four, seven, thirteen, eighteen, and nineteen, and twenty, is what I have.
Okay, I'm not sure that we need eighteen.
Uh that's the the SWP, the Stormwater Pollution Plan?
Yeah, we don't, but again, that's the one I'm talking about. We have no authority or we have no enforcement. That's that's a federal permit.
Okay. So three, four, seven, thirteen, nineteen, and twenty?
Uh I'm not sure twenty is important, but yes, it's gonna, you might as well because it's really easy to do.
It's listed.
For this kind of facility, that's no big deal. It should be easily submitted.
Okay. Okay, is there um a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe you can close the public hearing if you want more information from me.
Yeah, you know, that that's a good point, Matt.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I make a recommendation?
Dan, Dan, if I could uh ask for your, yes, please.
So so I mean, um you know, because at this point, none of these test bits have been done. We're debating about whether to 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 hold up the special permit until those are done. Um I guess, you know, we have these um the these conditions, these proposed conditions from Ty and Bond. Is it possible that we retain Ty and Bond to make sure they review thoroughly all this information? So we're having that third party outside consultant take a look at this moving forward. Would be a way to allow the permit to be approved, if if it's gonna get approved, and it to ensure that we're protecting the town and making sure that the stormwater system will be designed correctly.
So it seems to me that there's quite a bit of interest in the board to have these items addressed
Yep.
before we grant approval of these special permits. Now, the the question is, I guess you can just go ahead without any permit and do test borings and excavations uh without any permit?
Correct.
And then how do we make sure that uh that there's erosion control erosion control um steps in place to protect the environment? What do, what do we do about that?
Well, that swap, that swap plan is really identifies all these features, and erosion control again is, uh it's either, it's not planning board per se. It's the Conservation Commission. If there is actually an issue, they're the enforcement officer local, but uh they are, they're not involved in this project. So it's really goes back to the swap plan, which is a federal permit.
Mr. Chairman, if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, please, Matt.
The test pits required for Ty and Bond's verification are two test pits generally in this area, two within the system. We would go down the depth um a little bit further than the depth of the system. They'd be maybe eight to ten feet deep, very, you know, very small, the width of a bucket, so we can verify soil depth and groundwater depth. With this, soil is then replaced back into the pit. Uh there should be no real issues with uh erosion control because the soil is then placed back in place on. So the erosion control plan we do show here is for mass grading of, you know, an acre parcel, this will be literally two holes in the parking lot. So no other agency or town board or anybody needs to verify that. They can get it done next.
So this might be similar in scope to like a PERC test, which is commonly done?
Exactly, yeah. Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so there is there a motion? So so Matt, are you you looking for us to vote on this tonight? Are you willing to to um to uh request a continuation to give you the ability to to achieve numbers three, four, seven, thirteen, nineteen, and twenty?
Uh Mr. Chairman, I would love if you would vote tonight with these as conditions of approval, but seeing that uh the majority of board members want the information ahead of time, I I don't think I really have much of a choice but to request an extension.
And then the assumption is these are the only items that the board is gonna review that everything else appears to have met the conditions for approval. Um is that an accurate uh description?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. All right, so that might be the best way to to go ahead with this, Matt, because I don't think if we voted for it, you would do that well tonight.
Agreed.
So can you request a continuation?
Absolutely. Would you like me to do that via email to uh Dan La Roche?
Dan, are you are you accepting uh this stuff on behalf of the planning board?
I will. I'll I'll take that from from Mr. Bruton.
Okay.
Will forward that to Kate. Kate's still managing the records, so.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, so just to be clear, we're gonna uh accept that expect that items three, four, seven, thirteen, nineteen, and twenty test borings or whatever is required to complete those to the satisfaction of Ty and Bond. And those results will be sent to Ty and Bond, and we'll ask for them uh to comment one more time.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask when your next meeting is scheduled, next scheduled meeting?
That's December fifteenth, I believe. Is that the third Tuesday? I'm sorry, November.
Yeah, right. We have November still.
Yeah, what, um?
November seventeenth.
Yeah, November seventeenth, that would be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so you'll you'll uh so you're gonna seek a continuation of the public hearing for these matters. Is there a motion to uh accept the request for continuation?
I'll make a motion to accept the request for a continuation.
I'll second it. Any discussion? Paul is in favor. Craig is aye.
Tara is aye.
All aye.
Kevin, aye.
Bill and I.
Opposed? Okay, the motion's carried. Okay, so we will continue this public hearing until uh November, our November scheduled planning board meeting. Okay, now I will reconvene the public hearing for site plan review of ninety-six Maine as required and seven point four for the commercial building and also Munson Bylaw six point two two, the Commercial Development Bylaw. Uh we opened the first public hearing on this matter on June thirtieth, and I've had several meetings reviewing various iterations of the plans, and I've heard from various public boards and officials. And many members of the public have responded, and these responses have been posted on the planning board website. Uh the developer has submitted some new material. For example, I believe the site plan eliminated a retaining wall on the south side, and you've also uh submitted some renderings of the building uh with regards to height. Matthew, can you give me a rundown of whatever new material has been submitted since our last planning board uh public hearing?
Yes, sir. Uh so um we did provide um in regards to the site plan uh application. Uh there were some outstanding comments in regards to the traffic metal and sight lines, so that was provided. Um so that is, I believe you have a letter from Ty and Bond or consultants that all those items have been addressed um in regards to the uh traffic and driveway um submitted as part of this application. Again, uh we have um modified uh the grading on the the backside of the building, which is the more or less the east side of the building, which is the area in general that I'm circling. that I'm circling in yellow here. Shift over to the creating drainage plan. Um, so previously. Currently, there is an existing retaining wall that is um, shown on our survey on the property line crudely traced by my hand here in yellow. Um, previously, we had a retaining wall, I'll just change colors. We had a retaining wall along the frontage here, that still remains, and then we were proposing a retaining wall um, along this side as well to uh, help uh, with the topography changes that are on this sites. Based on comments that we received at this commission and with talking with the town planner, uh, we decided to soften this slope um, by removing the retaining wall and providing grading along this side, so it wasn't seen like stacked retaining walls. Um, so that slope is depicted here, uh, which is at one and a half to one slope. Um, we also do show uh, it's still a fence uh, along the the rear of this as well for screening purposes, uh, which I'll highlight here in blue. So that is shown there, so we now have an existing retaining wall to remain, a sloped um, sloped bank, and then the fence on top adjacent to the rear of the proposed uh, facility. And that that was the only kind of real major change in regards to um, the site layout, um, other than the stormwater, which we which we previously talked about.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so um, many of the townspeople uh, had concerns with traffic and safety, so the planning board hired tie and bond to conduct a traffic review. Uh, the full report is available on the planning board webpage. Tie and bond reviewed the proponents' original submission, had some issues brought up in their response dated July seventeenth. Uh, BL responded on July twentieth with clarifications, and tie and bond made their final review dated August twelfth. In this letter, uh, to specifically review the project for compliance with bylaws, section five, general regulations, and section seven point four site plan approval, tie and bond stated all that are previous concerns have been addressed. So all of the traffic issues seem to have been addressed uh, by tie and bond um, by the time they got to their final proposal. Uh, the planning board asked town planner Dan LaRoche to conduct a review uh, of the project plans for compliance with the bylaws. Uh, he did so for the various revisions. Uh, I'll now ask Dan for his comments relating to the latest revision uh, and hopefully just the latest revision to save time for more public comment. Um, his full text, of course, was available on the planning board's website. Dan, could you please go over um, you know, summarize your concerns and what you found with the review?
Absolutely, because uh, this is this is was my third uh, go around and going through and and looking over both the site plan review aspects as well as the commercial development bylaw that we have, and um, you know, put together a couple of detailed memos. The developer has responded to those, and you know, the the site plan that's on screen right now is a response to to the comments that I submitted, so what you'll see um, with the corner entrance, which was something, because in our, for example, in our commercial development bylaw, we require that there be pedestrian access off of the sidewalk along Main Street. That's the really the building's supposed to front on on Main Street and have a Main Street presence, um, so that was addressed. One of the things that hasn't been discussed yet, um, that was a concern in my last memo was uh, the HVAC equipment and the noise, because it's very uh, close to the residential abutter to the uh, southeast. Um, so I I believe there was some information submitted on on the the noise levels of the HVAC system um, by uh, the proponents. Um, the snow storage areas, which were an issue in the last last go round, with uh, that plan was submitted to tie and bond, and they were satisfied with that, so that was addressed. Uh, one of the things that we still have not yet to see is signage um, for for the for for the project. Um, so you know, any any um um, signs on the building or freestanding signs as far as size and so forth, so that's still an outstanding issue. I know that developers talking about, you know, doing that at a later date, uh, but that's still a pending question. And let's see, I think think uh, those those were the major issues, otherwise things were addressed, like changing the colors of the building to meet the uh, the commercial development bylaw, so they did those things to make it blend in more with the the fabric of downtown. Um, so they they did those things, and you know, I think we already have that before us. Uh, one of the things that that I did present to the developer, um, having heard comments from the residential abutter is having to do with the steep slopes and the the retaining walls along that that property border, and so there's also been some changes by the proponents on 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 the on the slopes as as discussed.
So Dan, there was a question about uh, noise from the HVAC uh, equipment. Has that been resolved?
Um, I think I, you know, the uh, information that was provided seemed to indicate that it, you know, fifty-four DBA is is quiet, meets our bylaw for sure. So performance standards of our bylaw.
Matthew, is there any comments you would like to make regarding uh, Dan's um, review of the project?
Um, I mean, just in general, as kind of Dan summarized, you know, um, you know, tie and bond uh, agreed with snow storage, that was an outstanding issue from before. Uh, you know, we've uh, looked to address to kind of soften the slope with the grading, as concerned with the neighbor. Have provided the mechanical uh, decibel stuff for rooftop units that complies with your um, zoning regulations to mitigate any noise offsite. Obviously sensitive to the residential area, so that that complies. Signage with with not aligned tenant under under contract right now, um, I can't provide any signage at this time, but I I am aware, I believe that you guys have a separate sign application, and you know, we'd obviously be willing to come back to show anything that complies with your regulations uh, at at the appropriate time.
Yeah, it's not unusual to do the signs uh, later under a separate uh, submittal.
Yeah. If I can add just one last thing, um, you know, now that the slope has been changed, I guess I guess a question, because we've gone back and forth on vegetation with regard to the, you know, the outside border of the property and how that's gonna be handled. Because clearly, if you're gonna change the slopes, then the existing vegetation has to go. Um, so it's probably gonna be impossible to retain the existing vegetation, Matthew. Um, and if if they, you know, I I think the goal was to to try to retain that to the maximum extent possible. And then if you're not able to do that, you know, what sort of planting plan um, to enhance the the plantings along that border? Yep, a great question, Dan. Uh, so I've switched over to the land, the proposed landscape plan. Um, so I'll just focus in on this area that was changed, so um, the removal of the retaining wall along uh, that east southeastern border there, um, obviously um, puts it at a pitch where, you know, planting is a little bit different from what we originally planned, but um, in in keeping with your regulations to provide a buffer between a commercial property and a residence in a commercial property, we are still providing um, you know, the existing retaining laws again will remain, and then we do have this a wall of plantings that will provide a not only a visual buffer, but a noise buffer as well. This would be directly on top of uh, the existing wall in our property. Uh, then there would be a a slope with with some, you know, riprap protection, because this is a steep slope. Uh, and then there would be a fence on top of that as well, so uh, we are providing, uh, we need to clear basically to provide the earthwork up into our property line. Uh, but we are proposing to replace it with a a a nice landscape buffer uh, after earthwork is complete. Uh, obviously, you guys have seen this before, not much has changed. We do have um, plantings along the frontage of the property uh, interior to the property as well, and then foundation plantings adjacent to the building um, as well, as long as trees and grass uh, opposite of the driveway as well, so a pretty extensive landscaping, when in reality um, the site uh, does not have much in the way of let me see here, uh, landscaping, as you can see from the most recent Google street view. I don't really have anything else to add at this point, unless you guys have any more questions, or you want to see anything else more specifically.
Matt, if maybe, uh, because this is new, at least new to us, if you could uh, show us the rendering of what it's gonna look like?
Yes, so this was the um, let me see here. So this is the rendering I used, I'd requested from this angle, right? This is the neighboring a property, um, southeast corner, so um, so you can see this is kind of a blend, and Doug Gruner, our architect, is on the line as well, but um, I can if Evan, if you want to find him, you know, well, so this obviously is the existing granite retaining wall that exists um, here today, which would remain. Uh, we show our arborvitae plantings, um, and then uh, the white massing of the proposed building. Uh, this rendering here was prior to that late requests from uh, the uh, the abutter, so we do show a retaining wall on the front, which is true. Uh, there is our retaining wall shown behind these arborvitae's here, which will not in reality. It does not reflect what's currently shown on the plans, that was removed, so um, the plantings here, let me just switch back to the plan here, T O. Those would be planted at a six foot minimum height, five foot on center. Um, that is a a standard height and planting spacing um, that you um, for a nursery, um, and then that's uh, spacing is provided, obviously, so these trees can grow um, to form a kind of a solid um, vegetated barrier um, between uh, between each other as as they mature um, over the years, so you know, the obviously between this wall and the trees and them growing over the years, uh, will provide, I think, a a clean, a clean buffer between uh, the two parcels.
Okay, and then so that um, the retaining wall uh, on the south side will be eliminated, and then I believe there's a, is it a six foot stockade fence at the top of the um, riprap slope? Is that what the site plan shows?
Correct. I'll I'll highlight the whole thing for you, Mr. Chairman, just because it's it's not only there, but it it uh.
Around the back also.
Around there, and there's also a another smaller section of fence, actually across the top of the retaining wall in the front. Um, obviously, not that one's not more for screening, but more for safety.
In that fence in the front, what what's the description of that fence in the front?
Show it to you here. The fence uh, in front is a four foot high decorative picket fence. Um, the called out uh, on the side here is is also um, right, it it transitions from a four decorative picket fence to taper to a six foot high wooden stockade fence, so there's a transition at the corner here, and then it's six foot high stockade all the way around to this end corner here.
Okay, got you. Okay. Uh, at this point in time, uh, I think I'd like to throw it open to public comment, and again, uh, so we can have as many people as possible, if we could keep it to one minute. Mr. Moderator will open it up.
Mr. Moderator, I like that. So um, just a reminder, you can raise your hand by uh, clicking underneath the participants tab or pressing star nine on your phone. We have uh, our first comment is from a phone number ending in zero three six.
Hi, this is Roxanne Gunther. I've got a couple of questions. Um, I understand with the building, the way the Dollar General has their 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 name on the building, is that gonna be lit up at all times in the nighttime?
Matt, can you answer that? Matt, can you answer that?
Yeah, so uh, we don't have a defined tenant, as I said before, um, so uh, we don't have any signage proposed at this time. Um, Dan, I am not sure with your regulations on signage, if you allow illuminated or backlit signage. What whatever, whoever comes to occupy this facility would obviously, you know, propose signage that would fall in line with your regulations. Um, I haven't looked at your signage regulations though, so if you allow it, I would say yes. If you don't allow it, I would say no.
So there is no uh, request for signage on a proposal as currently done?
Okay, I know he keeps saying we have no proposed tenant. We all know what it is, so let's not really play games here. My other question is, I personally like coming into town at night and seeing that the street is rolled up. Are they gonna maintain their ten o'clock closing time?
Matt, your hours of operation proposed?
I don't have any hours of operation proposed.
Is that something the bylaws would handle? Because I know I wouldn't want to live next to a Dollar General, and and we know it what it is, so let's stop playing the games. I wouldn't want those lights lit up at ten.
Hours of operation are typically uh, requested and spelled out in any approval. So Matt, you're gonna have to uh, request hours of operation.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, do or or Mr. Mr. LaRoche, uh, do you guys have uh, do you have restrictions on hours? Bylaws to that. Yeah, yeah, I would take a look at our performance standards, and then I'll give you some indication on hours. Obviously, with all your performance standards, um, but I can.
You you should specifically spell that out.
Yep.
For your proposal.
Yes, sir.
Okay, the only other thing I have, and this is the last thing, um, if this is in fact a Dollar General, which like I said, we all know it is, even though they're playing the game. Um, I I don't really understand what, why we need one with one five miles away that seems to be getting fines all the time, because they can't keep their aisles clear. And their their parking lot's a mess at all times, and um, Stafford's pretty nice, but it I I just don't feel they should put one in every town. I I don't think they need to grow to that degree, so that's pretty much all I have, but thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Uh, okay, so next comment is for um, phone number ending in seven one seven. You can unmute on your phone by pressing star six.
Hi, this is Carolyn Horacek. We live in the building that's that's shown on your picture. We are literally feet from that ugly, ugly, ugly building. And I am totally, totally, one hundred percent opposed to this. Just because you took away the retaining wall that you had up there, doesn't mean we're not gonna look at that building. We're still gonna see that ugly, ugly building from our second floor, and and we're gonna be have our, all of our sunlight completely cut off, and those arborvitae um, trees are the ugliest trees in the world, and they are not gonna fill in for years.
Is Carolyn, are are you, I I don't want to cut you off, is that the end of your your comment?
No, 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 I wasn't able to get in on the other on the other one either.
Okay.
Because I I signed in too or too late or something. Um, on the first proposal, it looks like they're gonna have water coming into our yard, into our our south yard and into our um, the backyard. And I'm not keen about that. We have a completely dry yard right now, and I don't want any water just discharged into our property. And another thing is, they said, oh, it's all right to have that ugly, ugly um, uh, mesh thing that holds the cardboard back, because it won't be seen by the public in the front. It'll be seen by us twenty-four hours a day. Mesh thing that holds the cardboard back because it won't be seen by the public in the front. It'll be seen by us twenty four hours a day. We do not want to see that ugly thing in the corner there.
Matt, is there a six foot stockade fence behind that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is a six foot high skate fence here and enclosing around there. So there's there's two fences back to back. Surrounding the dumpster enclosure.
And that's not a chain link fence? That's a stockade fence behind it?
It's a chain link fence with privacy slats, but solid.
I thought I thought the plan showed a stockade fence there, provide.
Mr. Chairman.
Six foot high wooden stockade fence.
The the red is a stockade fence. The yellow is a chain link fence with privacy slats.
Okay. And so the red, the stockade fence is six foot tall. And it looks like the elevation raises two feet before you get to the stockade fence. Is that accurate?
About a foot.
Four foot?
Four oh six to four oh seven, yeah.
Okay.
Carolyn, do you have more comments related?
Yeah, I just want to know how much of that ugly. Retaining thing, that ugly square thing in the back there in the corner that's going to hold cardboard. How much of that are we going to see over the fence?
Matt?
Any cardboard dumpsters are shorter than six feet. So it should be all blocked by the proposed fencing.
I don't believe that at all because I've seen the Dollar General things and they're a lot taller than that. And we are talking Dollar General here, not letting nobody be fooled.
Yeah, so the goal is to have complete complete enclosure of the outdoor storage area. So obviously, that, you know, that's what I'm proposing here is to keep anything under and blocked visually by the fencing. Behind the building and by the fence.
I have a question also about lighting. Since you're on top of our house. And when the lighting comes down, how much of that is going to hit our house at night?
One second. So included as part of the pack with a photometric plan, which does light levels out for proposed lighting. So. What we've proposed here is LED dark sky compliant full cutoff fixtures. That model light levels that you can see from all these graphics here. There is no lights proposed along your side of your houses approximately here. So there is. Now some lights on the building on the front facing the parking lot and facing the loading area. That is just enough to provide safety and security of the commercial property. There is no light spillage off of. Onto your property.
I don't believe that, but I'll 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 let you say it. I also have a question about. Let me see, my sensitive picture again. Let me see, okay. I have a terrible, terrible, terrible problem with safety. I don't know where you're getting your information from Ty and Bond or whoever. We live there and every day when I put my blinker on to turn into my driveway, I take my life into my hands. Because I think that I'm I'm so afraid that a car or a big truck coming down the hill is not going to see me in time. It's going to slam into me. Now you're talking another whole several hundred feet up the road. People are coming around that that blind corner down a hill. They're speeding. I can see numerous, numerous accidents there. I there's been several just recently. People have been hit, people have been killed. There've been several bad accidents there. This is just an accident waiting to be happened, happen.
We're relying on Ty and Bond's traffic report, which was done by a licensed. Insured professional organization. That's all we can do. I further called the police department myself. And requested accident information and they had none that were due to defects in the road. Within the last recent amount of time.
That is not the problem. The problem isn't defects in the road. The problem is. You're coming around that blind corner, you're coming down the slope and you don't expect cars to be coming in and out of this driveway. It's and there has been a lot of accidents there. Just there was one just a few weeks ago. A woman was killed several years ago. Our tenant was hit by a car coming. There's a lot of accidents in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. Evan, can we move on?
Okay, next is Stephen O'Neil.
Hey there, can you hear me? Had some problem earlier. Great. I'd like to address this ongoing correspondence between the planner and the developer. I want to preface this with the reminder that the opinion of the town planner may not be the opinion of the town. The planner is not an engineer, so we can't assess complicated plans without taking the word of the developer in all cases. Likewise, the planner is not a lawyer and therefore isn't a qualified person to rule on what bylaw means what. That responsibility to interpret bylaws belongs to the members of the planning board, who I hope do the responsible thing and decline this project. I'm hearing a lot of confidence and a lot of collaboration between this planner and the developer, which makes me uneasy. Now, this is not an attack on the planning department, but relying on this strange exchange between the planner and the developer. As a checklist for bylaw compliance could be a big mistake, especially when both parties have chosen to cherry pick which laws to respond to. So getting into it, you know, section seven point four point six requires that new developments minimize tree vegetation. Soil removal and grade changes and maximize open space retention. All that. As we've seen, this development is going to be a circus of grade changes and soil removal on a scale rarely seen. Even more incredibly, this planner wrote, quote, no scenic views have been identified on or viewed from the property, unquote. Now, that may have been true before the tornado, but I can personally attest to the view. That the view from that lot is the cause of a lot of rubbernecking on Route thirty two. And I've even witnessed some accidents from people craning their necks and slowing down their cars on the highway to catch that view. So bottom line, the site plan is not compliant with the bylaw. Now again, on page four, we find the bylaws requirements for architectural style. The planner's reply to the developer is a shunt to the commercial development portion, which comes later. But unfortunately, that's not adequately addressed. Those comments don't lead back to the phrase, quote. Architectural style shall be compatible with the rural slash historic character. And scale of buildings in the neighborhood in the town. So the planners noted some similarities to the town offices, which is not in the same neighborhood, which would be Academy, Academy Hill. And we should remember that the bylaws have important cultural and community considerations that really more than anything. Reflect the mandate of the townspeople, okay? So, you know, next I'd like to give you the most compelling and relevant bylaw, which the planner cared to include. Which is section six point two two point one, which states. Quote, the purpose of this bylaw is to preserve the small town character of Munson. On that bullet point, there's no planner comment. There's no response from the developer. It it's a conspicuous absence of discourse. And you know, there's other nitpicking stuff, but this proposal is not complete, like section six point two two point six. The bylaw requires that large retail buildings should feature multiple entrances. Now, our planner asked for the entrance to be moved, but the building still only has one entrance. If you look at the elevations, there's still only one entrance. They moved it to the corner of the building. So on these grounds alone, it should be denied. You know, B and L Construction added sidewalks that would, you know, eliminate people having to cross through the parking lot. Well, this ignores the fact that any pedestrian walking on Academy Hill on the sidewalk there is going to need to cross a forty foot wasteland of cars and trucks. And, you know, one other thing, the August twelfth response from Ty and Bond has about the traffic plan. Has not been posted on Munson's website. Likewise, you know, a peer review from Ty and Bond is not a real traffic study. And they just did one, by the way. There's a new Pioneer Valley Planning Commission study available now. I know because the guy was doing it right in front of my house. So, you know, you all know that B and L Construction, Matthew in particular, was caught red handed, overestimating sightline distance, you know, in a prior meeting. Anyways, I don't think it's appropriate to proceed until the town has seen and assessed that letter. And I'd also like it like an explanation for the slated hand in that previous meeting, which was never addressed. So wrapping up, as I've said over and over, Munson's zoning bylaws have clear language about proposed red development. Quote, special permits are intended to provide detailed review of certain uses and structures which have substantial impact upon traffic, utility systems. The character of the town among other things. The special permit review process is intended to ensure a harmonious relationship between proposed development and its surroundings. You know, consistent with the purposes and the intent of the bylaw. So, you know, I've talked to Kennedy Smith. He's a land use expert and senior researcher for the Institute for Local Self Reliance. He said, you know, it seems to me that the character of the town part of section seven point three point one of our zoning code. Should be a hard stop for this Dollar General proposal, both in terms of economics and architectural or urban design. Other communities have successfully made this argument with similar code language. So rather than lamenting that we don't have, you know, the the awesome, you know, anti-development bylaws of like. A town in Vermont, I think that planning board members should recognize that we have the bylaws already to to deny it. So, you know. Take a vote today, right? I I think that the proposal is just not proper. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, I don't move on to the next one, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Okay, the next one is listed only as Rob. All right, Rob is not unmuting. I'm going to move on to four, two, one, three, which I think is Valerie.
Yes, it is Valerie. Just going on with what Carolyn Horacek said and what Mr. O'Neil said. We had requested a prometic plan asking about the lighting on the property. And it was just referenced. It does not have a lighting schematic for the new design. With the entrance moved to the corner, you can't tell me that the entrance at the corner is going to have absolutely no lighting. And you cannot tell me that anybody in a retail establishment would have no foot candles. A totally black entrance to the store. So first of all, the prometic that we have asked for. Has not been provided. And if you look at the corner of their lighting design, it states under general notes. Due to changing lighting ordinances, it is the contractor's responsibility to submit the site prometrics. And luminary specs to the local inspector before ordering to ensure this plan complies with lighting ordinances. The planning board stood in front of the town meeting and said, we wanted zero foot candles for commercial lighting. I want the planning board to make sure that this bylaw gets upheld so that the residents that are in the area. Are not going to be impacted by the lighting. Second of all, a safety issue which has totally been ignored is the safety within the parking lot itself. It states that under our bylaw, six point two two point one one. And also listed per the town planner's comments of eight fourteen twenty. He recommends the approach that no delivery, loading, trash removal or compaction or other such operations. Be permitted between the hours of nine P M and seven A M unless the applicant submits evidence. That sound barriers between all areas for such operations effectively reduces noise emissions. So that which will not disturb adjoining conforming residential uses or zoned areas. If you take a look at it, that means what Matt had said that they would agree to. Is that all deliveries would take place between hours where there was no one in the parking lot. Most retail establishments open at eight, so you're telling me that all deliveries will take place between seven. And eight in the morning. It may be fine with just the actual merchandise coming in. But what about the people coming in with beverages, snacks, any other type of products that come in and out? Are you all going to be able to do that in a one hour timeframe, five days a week? And further, I would like the planning board to take a look at the trash situation again. Any of the deliveries can come up the driveway, go into the parking lot and back into the loading area. If you take a look at the trash people, they have to drive directly into the trash enclosure. Which means for them to leave, they are going to have to back into the parking lot. The trash company, whoever gets hired, is going to fit the pickup in with their schedule. So there is a realistic possibility that the trash driver is going to be backing into the parking lot. When people are exiting or entering their cars, coming in and out of the store. When they're backing in in one of those big trucks, there is a definite safety hazard. If they cannot see the people or the people cannot see them. So I think this is an important safety hazard that has to be mandated. That it will not happen to cause any problems within our town.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to respond to the last?
Please, Matt.
Okay, so in in regards to, I guess I'll take Valerie first. Photometric plan has has been provided, you know, it's been reviewed by Dan O'Neil. You know, it's for the operation, a safe operation of the facility. You know, it shows zero foot candles crossing the property line, which is what your bylaw requires. These fixtures are LED dark sky compliant and full cutoff. So that means the full cutoff, they can be adjusted. So even after installation, if there's any glare, anything like that, they can be adjusted in the field. So. The photometric plan does comply with your regulations and it has been reviewed by your planner. In addition, we can tweak them in the field after construction as necessary to make sure no glare is is. Seen off the property. In regards to truck traffic, we have provided a plan that shows the operations of trucks. Regarding deliveries to the property that would happen during, you know, during off peak. Which I mean is it's not going to be the busiest times for potential potential shopping. It would happen during business hours off peak. There's plenty of room on the property to come into the site to use the dedicated loading area. That is an operation to that is is handled by a future tenant. There's no safety concerns in my eyes or in Ty and Bond's eyes about the setup of this. This is a standard. Operating procedure for every commercial development. I'm sure some that you already have in town. In regards to Mr. O'Neil's comments about pedestrian safety. We we have maintained a sidewalk along Main Street, which exists today. Let's not pretend that we're creating a new sidewalk driveway connection. Forty feet is still what is here today. So we are doing that. This has been viewed by your DPW Director for Safety. We have included crosswalks, painting and detectable warning, which do not exist today. We also provided a stop bar, arrows and a stop sign. So don't don't be fooled that this is going to be creating a dangerous situation because this has been reviewed. By Ty and Bond and by your own departments. We have also provided a pedestrian connection from the main road to the front of the building that does not cross any parking lot. So anyone can safely get from the public right of way to the front of the store without crossing any parking areas. We've also provided handicap spaces directly across from this area as well. In regards to Mr. O'Neil's expansive comments about not complying with regulations. I would completely disagree with his assessment. We are providing. A site plan here that complies with the regulations. You can see the charts above. We've responded to multiple rounds of comments from Ty and Bond. His commission and Mr. O'Neil to come to a a place where not only the site plan, but the architecture. Complies with your regulations. This is a site plan approval for site for the actual layout of the building. The special permits are only related to stormwater management system. Obviously, I understand I am not popular. This is not a popularity contest. I'm an engineer trying to design. A facility that falls in line with your regulations. That has been the regulations that have been approved by members of this town. Um, so the, uh, the inclination that is, that is not, um, complying with regulations, I don't agree with that. So, um, I'll leave it at that. I, I know that there's a lot more people to speak and I'm happy to respond as more comments do pop up.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay, so next up would be, looks like, uh, Ray.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Sure, um, great. I have a couple of points. Um, uh, the, the first is, is that um, the white three B, three D block, uh, model that was, uh, mentioned as a rendering. Um, as a professional designer, I want to make sure it's clear that this is in no way a rendering. Um, it's a three D, uh, CAD block extrusion of the blueprint. Showed in pure white that is trying to make the building look as nice as possible. Um, until the applicant submits renderings that actually show the color, material, shadows, signage, et cetera, I would ask that the board and the public use the rendering submitted by the outside visualization resource to make a decision. The second point I wanted to discuss is that, uh, when people refer to the text in the bylaws about maintaining uh, historic character and fitting in with the neighborhood, these are not just a couple of phrases cherry picked out of a hundred and fifty page document referring to maintaining character comes up twenty-seven times in the bylaws and fitting in with the neighborhood comes up twenty times. You can see it clearly, clearly a theme of the bylaws, a stated intent of those who wrote them and a law that, and law that needs to be followed. For example, this project does not comply with bylaws five point two point one point three, seven point three point one, seven point three point eight point two and seven point four point six point three on this basis, and I could list more. Also, if there's any question about what it means to fit in with the neighborhood, the community plan for the Munson Center published on June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve provides examples of this. As it says in the introduction, this document was created with coordination between residents, elected officials, committees, town staff and business representative, among others. The bylaws were then amended to add bylaw five point two point one point eleven that specifically states that commercial development needs to implement the goals of the community plan for Munson's, Munson Center, the same document. The introduction to this document has statements such as the ideal Munson Center maintains its small town charm. New development fits in well with Munson's historical character and that downtown is a safe, lively and pleasant place to be all throughout the day where residents can feel at home in their community. This document then specifically calls out this exact parcel of land and ninety-sixth Main Street is a key development site. Referring to this parcel that states, this illustration shows how the redevelopment of another key parcel is likely to change in the near future could be pursued. For this area of Main Street just north of State Street entering the downtown, uses are primarily residential. A concept for a modest subdivision, uh, a concept for a modest subdivision of homes that maintain the character of the neighborhood is shown. It then states in the margins that redevelopment possibilities should encourage residential development that increases the number of residents who live within walking distance of downtown and support downtown businesses and ensure that new developments fit Munson's character. A big box discount chain store is exactly the opposite of this vision and therefore is in violation of bylaws five point two point one point eleven, as well as earlier bylaws already stated. Uh, if you want information, further information, um, Rob, uh, has written a letter that is posted on the Planning Board website. It tells us more than a dozen of the bylaws that this project does not comply with. One last section point, seven point two point one of the bylaws states that the board shall approve no applications that are not in all, uh, respects and conformity with this bylaw. The key word here is all. If it doesn't satisfy even one bylaw, then it cannot legally be allowed. And this project doesn't comply with many of the bylaws.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, uh, the project architect Doug Gruner is available to respond if you would like him to respond regarding architecture at this time?
Sure, if you would like to, please, please do.
Evan, can you find, uh?
Yeah, I got him.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and members of the audience. Uh, to address your comments as far as the rural character of the building, uh, we've used the bylaws to basically help us, you know, with the, uh, the look of the building. It incorporates many architectural elements that's found through the town, uh, one of which is actually the roof line, uh, that's pretty similar to the gymnasium that was unfortunately destroyed by the tornado, as well as the, um, the corner entrance, which simulates the recessed portico as well too, as well as some of the materiality that's found, which is the clay fired red brick and, um, some of the, uh, vertical elements found on the, uh, the other building was also unfortunately lost during the tornado as well. Uh, as far as the renderings, uh, the renderings were created to basically show only the height of the building in relation to the, the property next door. So that's why we actually did it in white to basically just illustrate the height, not to actually demonstrate context essentially. And as far as, um, the materiality and the colors, these elevations, uh, clearly show the different color schemes as well as the materiality through the notes and whatnot. So I disagree that the, the rendering should be, um, revised to show the colors as they're basically showing right here.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next is Karen Nody Valley.
Hi, it's Karen Nody Valley, two thirty Stafford Road.
Hi Karen, go ahead.
Hello. So my comment is that, um, Steve O'Neil and Ray and others have identified from what I can hear as several deficiencies and omissions in the Dollar General submission. And in particular, I think that Steve and Ray both, um, they, they cited different sections of the bylaws, which I have not personally researched, but it's not incumbent on me to do the research for the planning board. The planning board needs to review each and every item and each particular objection where town residents and concerned parties have identified these particular, um, points in the bylaws where there is potentially grounds for, for these permit, permits to be denied. So again, I think it's incumbent on the planning board to be looking at each and every one of those particular items and weighing them carefully. And I just want to voice my concern, my, first of all, my support for Steve, Ray and the others that have raised all, they have done the research. They have, they have taken their arguments and compared them to the bylaws. And I just want to make sure that the planning board is, is thinking this through carefully and because, uh, Dollar General in particular, um, has a history nationwide of, of having towns and cities come up against them and some of them, small towns, have been able to overcome dollars, uh, Dollar General coming into their towns. And this is something that I don't think that we should take lightly. I think that I, I agree with the character of the town objections and some of the other particular items. And I just want to make sure that the planning board is really putting proper consideration into each and every one of the townspeople's objections in comparison to what the bylaws actually allow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next is Rob. Are you there, Rob?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, ju-just to note earlier, when I had my hand raised, the app wouldn't let me unmute. It said the host needed to enable it. Um, so just for future, uh, guests, they, they might have the same trouble.
Robert, can I, can I ask you one question before you, you speak? Are you on here? Is this, is this, uh, Rob Horchek?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you just, you have two hands. Oh, there we go. Okay, got it. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no worries. Just, just to note that some other people might have the same trouble, uh, unmuting.
Yeah, I'm clicking in on my end. I think it's just something was up with it, but go ahead, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, my, my steam has already been taken a little bit on some of the points I was going to make, uh, to be honest, but you know, I just want to mention again, when we talk about historic character, um, you know, and they'd say the renderings show some of the things that have been done. Uh, I just want to mention, there's no way you can take a big box discount chain store, um, of a Dollar General and say that it's going to maintain the small town charm, uh, and historic character. Um, you know, imagine all the signage with Dollar General written and for sale and people coming and going. Um, there, there, there's no way to really say that that's, uh, historic or, uh, small town charm. And, and again, the bylaws were already listed by, by Ray and Steve. Um, but I do want to point attention to a letter that's on the planning board website that I wrote, which detailed about ten pages of bylaws that this does not satisfy. And again, just to mention that there are quite a few, uh, the other members already listed them, but there are quite a few, uh, that this does not satisfy. And, and although they are trying to answer some of these questions, I just want to note that, uh, it, it is by law that they need to follow every single bylaw and there are quite a few that are, that are not being met. Thank you.
Okay, Evan, I'd like to, uh, cut off pub at eight forty-five.
That, that was the last hand raised that you had?
Okay, because I'd like, I'd like to give the, uh, board a chance to comment also.
Yes.
No other hands raised?
Now, would I be allowed to comment, uh, prior to perhaps?
Can you repeat, Evan? I'm sorry.
Would it be all right if I commented quickly?
Please do.
I, I just want to point out a, a couple of things. Um, I, I do know that, um, you know, part of what happens in these hearings, because I've been involved in a number of them, is, uh, you know, Dan's role is a little bit misconstrued. Um, I don't believe that anything that the planner has done in this particular case is any different than we've done in any other case for development uh, within the town of Munson. Um, and I think that is exactly what his role is designed to be, um, in our current governmental model. Um, so I know he's, he's oft vilified, uh, for having conversations with developers, but that's, that's a large part of what he's paid to do. Um, and I think a lot of that depends on whether you like the project or not. Um, so, um, I did want to just point that out because I think he's, uh, you know, unduly, uh, attacked in a lot of these, these meetings that we have. Um, and I also just want to point out, a, a lot of folks are pointing out bylaws. Um, and I think that part of having a public hearing process, if you haven't been involved before, um, you know, the absence of prior comment by members of the planning board does not mean that they don't know what those bylaws are, are, or agree or disagree. Um, they allow the public to comment first in the hearing process prior to their own deliberations. Um, and I, I just think that, you know, that i- is, is also something that needed to be pointed out. Uh, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan, and I, I would also like to add something along those lines that we have a town planner. Um, we're very happy that we do have a town planner because they do make the planning board's job much easier. We have asked them to comment on this particular project, uh, with regards to compliance with the bylaws. And the way the bylaws are written, if you back up to the preamble, uh, it probably says something like, the bylaws, the goal is to protect the health, welfare and safety of the residents. And then that gets further refined, um, in some sections that we want to maintain the historic character. And then that further gets refined because none of those will stand up in court. The, the, the bylaws, as they're generally described, uh, the intent is there and then that gets refined and it gets refined again. And typically that verbiage is pretty loose, too loose to hold up in court. And then it ultimately gets further described to the materials should be, um, uh, specifically, uh, and, and I think it states the materials shall be high quality clabberds, things of this and that. So they're written to be further refined and those are the bylaws that you look at because those are the ones that make the law enforceable and easy, easier for the planning board or its risk, or its representatives to interpret the bylaw. So again, I do appreciate the work that, that the town planner did. Uh, and the bylaws have to be read on all different levels. They can't be taken out of context. So that being said, I certainly appreciate all of the townspeople's time and all of the thought and all of the guidance that they're giving the planning board members. Uh, I'd like to throw this open to, uh, the planning board members now to please make any comments they have. Are there any planning board members that would care to, uh, to speak and?
I have some comments, but I, I'd like to defer to others first. I don't want to be the first one each time.
Okay, anybody else scared to open up from the planning board? Okay, I can start. My, my, uh, my biggest concern is, um, if we look at seven point four point six, number two, and I'll read it. The development shall be integrated into existing terrain and surrounding landscape and shall be designed to protect abutting properties and community amenities. Building sites shall, to the extent feasible, A, minimize use of wetlands, steep slopes, flood plains, hilltops. B, minimize obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations. C, preserve, uh, preserve unique, uh, natural and historical features. D, minimize, uh, tree vegetation, soil removal and grade changes. E, maximize open space, F, screen objectionable features. So of all of those things, um, I'm not so sure that the project would be integrated into the existing terrain and I'm not so sure that it's going to protect abutting properties. And I don't think they've minimized the use of steep slopes. And I'm not so, and I don't think they've minimized the use of hilltops. I looked at the site plan, uh, the grading plan. And, um, on the south corner, the sidewalk is at elevation three ninety-three. The building floor is at elevation four oh eight, which gives us a rise of fifteen feet in elevation in twenty-two feet of, of a horizontal distance. And then if you put on top of that a building, which is between twenty and thirty feet to the ridge, you're looking at a structure in site work that's thirty-five to forty-five feet above the sidewalk. Our bylaws allow for a building that size, but it's complicated when we look at a building that is going to be that big and massive, that close to the road. And I'm having a hard time thinking about another one in Munson, uh, at least in the central district that is so imposing, so close to the road. Uh, most buildings start pretty close to steep, uh, street grade. Uh, not, 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 uh, fifteen feet above it, uh, twenty-two feet away. So I'm, I'm trying to reconcile in my mind how, how that's going to, minimize the use of hilltops and steep slopes and be integrated into existing terrain. Uh, similarly on the right side, um, the elevation of the top of granite is three ninety-eight, the building floor is four oh eight, so that's a rise of ten feet. Again, just in twenty-one feet. And you add the building to that and you're looking at a structure uh, that's about forty feet tall, twenty-one feet from the abutter. And I'm not really sure that that would be called protecting the abutting properties. So I realize that indeed retail and all we can look at, we don't really, the, the zoning bylaws don't care who the tenant is. Uh, the zoning bylaws, which were approved by the town meeting uh, after several public hearings, don't really say that you can build a, a Talbets, but you can't build a, a Dollar General. So all we do is look at retail, it's an allowed use and the size certainly is allowed. And it appears as though architecturally, they've made quite a few efforts to meet our town bylaws. But I'm just not so sure that this was integrated into the terrain, that it protects abutting properties, that it minimizes steep slopes and that it also minimizes hilltops. Uh, that's my only comment.
Mr. Chairman, can I res, can I respond?
Yes, please do, Matt.
There?
Yeah.
Um, Evan, do I still have the ability to share my screen?
Uh, I can give it back to you. Hold on.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, great, great points that I, I, I think I can, um, give you and the commission a sense of comfort with, um, what is, in terms of the terrain and fitting in with the environment. So, uh, up here, what I have is these, right? So just want to point out that this is a redevelopment project of an existing of an existing previously developed parcel that was obviously unfortunately damaged during this tornado. The existing topography for this site is a dome, a hilltop, right? 410 is approximately the, as I circled before, the top, the top of this slope, right? 410, we drive all the way down to 391 at the abutting southeastern corner. And you can see these topography lines, dramatic steep slopes in all directions. And hence the existence of this retaining wall that's been there, you know, I'm sure for a very long time. Now, this is a historic photo from tornado damage. It's great, I feel, in context to the scale that you're talking to. You can see the existing slope of Main Street and the road. You can see the beginning of this granite wall, which we're proposing to remain as it's part of the character of this area. And it's great cuz you can see some pedestrians walking. The proposed building historically on this parcel, and there was two, there's one tucked back here and one close to the street, and in context with this car, is much larger than what we're proposing here. And I would argue we have much more character proposed in our building than what was previously there. The topography that you're referring to, the drop from the finished floor to the road, the finished floor to the sidewalk, that is, that's there. To me, maintaining these slopes, maintaining these granite walls, maintaining this driveway is being less intrusive into the neighborhood. This is, you know, a rolling hilly New England town. If we were to flatten this parcel, export 50,000 to 60,000 cubic yards to flatten it everything out, that would be a dramatic shift in not only drainage patterns, but also the character of the town in terms of what's going on here. So in terms of the proposed grading, you see what the existing conditions that we're working with. And if I'm going back to our proposed grading plan, you know, 407, we are trying to minimize this. The current, the existing building was three feet higher and also much taller. We're bringing this down as much as we physically can without destroying the character of the area. In terms of slopes, yes, there are slopes here. This is not a flat plain in the Midwest. This, you guys live in a hilly New England town. We're working with the site. What is proposed here is, I think, a responsible development in terms of preserving the topography of the area. And we have made dramatic landscape improvements and also screenings with fencing to protect adjacent users. You know, if I'm going back and using this as an example, historically, I think this is much more intrusive in terms of scale and size and topography. What we're proposing is not dramatically different than what's there now. We're not trying to manipulate to create hills or flatten hills. We're working with the terrain and preserving it to the best of our ability, given the surrounding properties and road. You know, I don't know if you have anything else you want me to speak to, but, you know, we're obviously not touching flood plains. We're not touching wetlands or anything like that. So, you know, we're maintaining existing topography and, you know, bringing the scale of a building down dramatically with also making sidewalk connections, landscape improvements along frontage, and also providing screening to, you know, a commercial property, even though it is a residential user. So I understand that this is, you know, a difficult site. I know more than ever as we designed it. But it's a redevelopment site. It's a property that has previously been worked on. And we're working within the bounds of the topography. And I think any dramatic grading more than what we've shown is actually going further in the direction of not maintaining the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Matt. Your points were well made. Thank you. Any other planning board members care to comment?
Comments, I may. Not to take consideration what Matt has said. I still believe that, Craig, your comments regarding 7.4.6.2 are accurate. Also, would it bring attention to 7.4.6.3 regarding architectural style? The buildings in this area generally is the Greek Revival style. And this building doesn't meet that criteria. This building is more like one would see in a strip development area. Not, our potential style does not conform. But I have some other issues that I'm concerned about as well. Regarding the landscape buffer strip under 5.110, the buffer strip is supposed to be a landscape, except for pedestrian trafficways. And this buffer strip is a rock slope wall, turning area rather, that is gonna be somewhat difficult to maintain because of the steepness and the fact that it's isolated from the rest of the parts of the property. So I'm afraid we're gonna have a weed-infested, not very attractive rock slope in the near future. Additionally, they talk in terms of the front of the building, they're gonna put a retaining wall in using blocks, concrete blocks, which I don't think is at all in keeping with the character of the area. I would go, I've got this issue up before regarding the truck access for deliveries to the building. And shows a truck going over the carving wall. The proponent has said it's gonna be a concrete curbing. It's still going to be going on top of it, and I suspect that that curbing is not gonna last very long, even if it is concrete. And furthermore, it's running right up against the edge of the infiltration overflow basin to the north of the site. And so that very likely is gonna be causing damage to that. And when the truck does back into it, it's not shown backing into the loading platform. It's shown backing into the trash receptacle area. And in regard to the trash receptacle area, I made an inventory as best I could of six similar type facilities in the area. Palmer, Stafford, a couple of the communities that have these kinds of stores. And each one of them has, outside the building and backgrounds, back or side of the building, trash and racks that are not being used. And not, clearly, the space allocated in this plan is not nearly large enough to contain the kinds of things that this kind of store generate. There should be an enclosure for all these kinds of debris or unused equipment. Also, in each one of these stores, I've noticed that they have a propane dispensing and ice machine. And there's no provision made here, one way or the other. I don't know that we can prohibit them, so I think they should be provisioned made for them. Because the assumption is that to be, unless they specifically state otherwise, that they will be having those kinds of machines. And we need to have proper shielding, if you will, to get the character of the community. I think that's the essence of my concern. There are a lot of issues that should have been addressed. But those are the main thrusts that I have concerns with.
Would you like to respond?
Matt, would you care to comment?
Sure. I think I got them all, Paul. Let me know if I forget one. So in terms of landscaping, yes, you're right, there is a landscape setback requirement, which we are complying with. You know, we obviously have the crossing for the driveway here at the front. But boundaries are setback. The building is not within that landscaped area. We are showing landscaping on all sides, interior and along the frontage of butters. We did show a retaining wall here before, which did include more landscaping. But at the request of the abutter and the planner and this commission, we went back to a slope to soften the feel, to take into concern the concerns of the abutter with some topography that we're dealing with here. And I would rather have a stable slope that is planted and has a fence on it that is gonna be stable and will handle stormwater and prevent erosion than the retaining wall, which I understand that was a preference. So I would argue that we do comply with the landscaping setbacks. And this is an expansive use of the property with the landscaping. And I'll again flip back to what's here now. Everything on this site is overgrown weed scrub brush. So I know the building is obviously, you know, a difference from existing conditions. But the landscaping is a dramatic improvement for a buffer between the existing neighbor and what's here today. In terms of the truck turning movement, typically, a store of this size would have one truck entering per week of an 18-wheeler status. That is shown on this truck turn here. This landscaped, not landscaped, sorry, concrete island that I'm highlighting in yellow is a mountable concrete island. This is commonly seen on restricted driveways that you've maybe seen in CDFs or things like that where you can only go right in and a right out. They're commonly built with sloped curbing, so the trucks can roll over. The reason we even have that there is because this is only taking a truck once a week during normal business hours when you're just having standard cars. You wanna channelize this to make sure that people are staying in their lane. So there's no concern with trucks rolling over this. This is a common technique for defining lanes when trucks are only coming infrequently. This truck turn that we do show is the worst-case scenario. And what I mean by that is, this is a right in and a right out. And that entire time, we are not crossing the center line of this road. If there is a delivery that comes from the other direction, say, coming in this way and then leaving this way, there is much more room for the truck to play with because they're using the entire width of the road. What we're showing here is the worst-case scenario. And the truck can make the turn safely into the site and back up into the loading and dumpster area, which is shown here, which is utilizing this door right here. So this has been reviewed by Ty and Bond, your technical peer review impartial judge. So I have no concerns with the safety or movements of a truck on this site. In terms of outdoor storage, you know, everything should be hidden behind the building from view, from Main Road, because we're using the building as a screening wall. We also providing not only one fence, but two fence. Everything should be enclosed within this to make sure things are not blowing around the parking lot or off the property. And, you know, I think if nothing is happening, like I'm sure you guys do with other commercial users or even residential users, if that is not happening, you have a town staff and zoning enforcement arm to make sure that that's being enforced. You know, I can say one thing and you guys can say another thing. It's a he said, she said. But that is what we're proposing, and you guys do have a regulatory arm to make sure that what I'm saying and what is being built and what is operating is being followed. I can't tell you here, I'm gonna build a retail store and then come in with a Ferris wheel the next day. That's not how this works. You know, I'm proposing plans, all building departments, zoning departments, Department of Highway, everyone needs to make sure that what we're proposing here is built the same way and then is operating the same way. So I'm not sure how you guys handle traffic or blight or noise ordinances on the regulatory side. But what we've proposed here complies with all regulations in terms of setbacks, open space, landscaping, noise ordinance, and buffers. Been verified by your technical peer review engineer and also your planner. So I guess that's all I have to say at the moment. Just in general, you know, everybody has an opinion. We've worked very extensively with the board and the town planner to come to a design that we believe is attractive and would fit in with this neighborhood. We will never please everybody. That's not the goal. Again, I hate to say it. This is not a popularity consensus. Fortunately, if that was, economic development would ground to a halt. You know, this site has been destroyed and derelict for a decade. You know, we're looking to make a significant investment, and I think an attractive investment in this property. And I think we've been very responsive to the board and town staff and the public.
Thank you very much, Matt.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the comment on the architecture as far as the Greek Revival stuff. So we have actually added Greek Revival elements over the entry space to basically accentuate a focal point through Greek returns and the traditional 912 pitch roof, as well as the exposed rake. And that is found on many residences throughout the town to actually create the adamant look as well.
Thank you, Doug.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the planning board care to comment?
Have we gotten anything from the Port of Health, Selective Conservation, Highway Department, Fire Department, Police Department?
Yeah, we did get. We got from the Historical Commission, they wanted a plaque, which the developers added. The fire department asked about a hydrant. Brian Harris said, after reviewing the plans and the layout of the parking lot, I think it would be advantageous to have a fire hydrant installed in the median of the parking lot across from the main entrance of the building. There are two hydrants in close proximity to Main Street, but because of the layout of the parking lot, our supply line from one of those would likely block access for any other fire apparatus. The company would own and maintain this hydrant. So they asked for a hydrant. The police department. Let me see. John Morrell saw on one of the original plans, they were missing a thermoplastic crosswalk along the sidewalk, and I believe that was added. The water and sewer department stated that they wanted a new sewer entry. And they came up with some technical stuff for how to tie into the water and sewer. The police department chief would still only recommend that parking in the vicinity of the entry exit drive be prohibited so as not to impede site distance. And then he also mentioned that the posted speed was 30, not 25. And then John Morrell again stated that some of the traffic issues he had, and again, that's part of why we kicked off hiring Ty and Bond. So those are the comments we got. And again, the Historical Commission asked if they could have permission to erect a plaque on the site to commemorate the location of the Academy Buildings, which the developer has agreed to do. So that's pretty much what we got from town boards. Any other planning board comments? Okay, Dan, you care to weigh in on the board's options here? And again, we appreciate all of your, all of the help you've given the planning.
Okay. Also, at this point, so this is site plan review. So, you know, it's an allowed use. Basically, the board can approve the plan as submitted. You can approve it with conditions, or you can deny the site plan. So those are your three choices. You know, since it is an allowed by right process, if the applicant was denied, they certainly could come back, reapply without any time limits or anything else, unlike a special permit. So that makes this process a little different. So site plan review is tied to the building permit. And that's the legal permit that's actually provided as part of the process. So that's some background of what site plan review is. So again, you can approve it as is. You can approve it with conditions. Or you could deny the site plan. If you deny the site plan, you'd wanna make sure you make some findings of why you're making the denial. So, you know, certainly, you know, we're at, I'm not sure if we have this point. You know, we're at, you know, I'm not sure if we at this point, since the special permits are still open. Um, but though I don't think those will necessarily change how the site plan is gonna look.
So we can act independent of the other public hearings for, um, special permit?
They could, they're all separate permits.
And would, would, would we, uh, close the public hearing before we entertain any motions or do we just go right into motions?
Oh, I would certainly want to close the public hearing, so testimony is complete.
Okay.
There, the planning board could deliberate and, you know, make a motion.
Okay. Thank you very much for your help, Tim.
Sure.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second that, any discussion? All those in favor?
All aye.
Aye.
Craig, aye. All those opposed? Okay, a motion's been made and carried to close the public hearing, is there a motion to take action? Uh. On the site plan approval before us tonight? Either to, uh, approve, approve with condition or deny?
I make a motion we deny the plan for the following major reasons, although there are several as have been expressed and I would include in our denial. Main one being seven point four point six two and three. The lack of trash containment. And the truck entry, uh, for delivery of product in the loading platform location.
Um, and did, did, did you specify seven, I'm sorry, Paul, seven point four point six number two?
It's three.
Uh, number three you stated?
Two and.
Two and three, okay, okay, very good.
There are other issues we've stated previously that I would include in the, uh, denial reason for denial. And I, I, I don't, I don't want to miss anybody, miss lead, I'm not denying the use, I'm just saying that we, it's designed, this doesn't meet our criteria.
My, okay, a motion's been made and I'll second that. And as far as discussion, um, again, I understand that it's allowed by right. Um, it seems as though they've met quite a few of our. Um. Bylaw requirements. But I concur with Paul that, that a couple of these were. Were glaring enough not to approve. So a motion's been made in second, uh, and any further discussion? All those in favor of denying the plan for the above reason, aye, Craig is aye.
Paul is aye.
Tara is aye. Marilyn is aye.
Kevin is against.
Okay, so there are, was that four votes in favor of denying and one vote against denying? Is that correct?
Correct.
Again, Craig, Craig is aye. Paul?
Aye.
Marilyn?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And Paul, and, uh, I'm sorry, Kevin?
Aye.
No, okay. So there's four in favor of denying, one opposed. So the motion to deny is carried. Thank you all, I would like to thank all participants, um, for their efforts. The developer, I think, did a very good job, it was a very tricky slope. Um. I hope that the town isn't viewed as being against commercial development. But again, the planning board is legally obliged to abide by the bylaws. Or at least our best interpretation and I am, I, I appreciate Dan's help. Uh, Evan, you did a good, great job as a moderator, uh, I think the, the proponent did a good job and I appreciate the wisdom of the board. And I appreciate all of the townspeople for their involvement. Uh, is there any other business for the planning board to address tonight? Is there a motion to close, uh, the planning board meeting? For October? Uh, I second the motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Uh, motion to adjourn has been, uh, made and carried, thank you all very much for your participation.
Thank you.